Very good, well, thank you. And thanks for those of you who were in the lunch a few moments ago. We have a number of items. I think that the agenda looks deceptively short, but there are a number of items that can take a bit more time. But let's go ahead and start with facilities and the item for all State Community College Huntsville. And Frank, if you could give us an update on that.
Yes, sir. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. This is a renovation project at Wallace Community College in Huntsville. It's recommended that Alabama Community College System Board trustees authorize Wallace State Community College in Huntsville to repair or replace the poultry diagnostic lab roof. Since y'all are new, obviously, people of history. In April of 2011, I'm sure y'all remember the terrible day of tornadoes. This campus was hit twice by tornadoes and over thirty buildings were impacted by the tornadoes. We replaced a lot of roofs up there and repaired a lot of them. This is one of the last ones. It's leaking pretty bad. And this building houses a lot of really expensive, very sensitive equipment. It has to be, of course, watertight, moisture resistant in conditioned space. There's actually, one of the rooms in here is a lab for animal autopsies. So it's, the roof's been leaking, it needs to be replaced. I'll begin to answer any questions for you. So standing seam metal roof. The school has already done an RFP and selected a design team to work on the roof. They've selected a company that does a lot of roofs, so it shouldn't be any problem.
Frank, frank question. Going forward, when I see a roof leaking and damaging, I think, say, both of the equipment and the number one, employees and students.
Absolutely.
Would y'all look going forward and say if there is a legal way that even though this would not have been on the previous work session, that we could have added it to our agenda without going through the work session if the board deemed it an emergency situation?
I think that's a great suggestion. As you know, we're working on your board policies and that could certainly be incorporated. You know, it's y'all's decision and that could be part of a board policy for facilities.
David, maybe you could take a look or...
Well, it could, it can be. It can be an agenda. So the current matter is not going on the work session. But since we had a general meeting tonight, the issue is, I think we...
Berth's notice.
...have a notice that asks to give it to the board. So it's, it can be.
Okay. So as long as we do, but prior to ending the regular board meeting, we could add...
Yeah, going forward, if you see anything like this, please get up with personal help and I, we need to, if you look at a clear emergency, we would like to do the help extra.
Absolutely. And I couldn't agree with you more. I mean, a licking roof's not going to heal itself. Any other questions? Thank y'all.
Thank you, Frank. Next, fiscal. The chief of Valley Community College.
Good afternoon. Chautauqua Valley is planning to offer a welding option to their associate degree, Associate Applied Science degree next summer. That's pending SACS approval. But they're also asking to implement a twenty dollar per class, per semester fee to pay for the consumables and to maintain the equipment related to that, those classes that they're, they want to offer. As you see, that doesn't generate a ton of money, about nine hundred dollars a year's projected amount that would be generated by that fee. And that, as I said, it would just take care of the consumables, gas, electrodes, things that would be related to the welding, those welding programs.
Has there been a request sent to the local industries in the area because they'll benefit the most from these students to see if they could help in some of the consumables to keep your costs down?
Mark.
I would reach out, especially to manufacturers that these would benefit the most because consumables would be something I think they would want to help everywhere.
Well, if you notice an action item, Perkins has actually provided a grant that will give them the initial startup for those consumables. Any other questions?
Thank you, Jenny. Next, information technology, John C. Calhoun Community College. This is a purchase of some computers and kind of a regular purchase of computers and technical infrastructure. And I may ask Dr. Clover if he would just kind of explain how this is...
I'd be glad to. As far as the board, I did tell Dr. Heinrich, as long as none of you ask me what to do after they're turned on, I'll be able to explain it very well. We, we're on about a three-year depreciation cycle on our, on our computer infrastructure. And so once, you know, warranties go out, we generally try to try and cycle those computers out. So, and we also put package, I could bring before the board really an annual package that is, you know, instead of dropping them two or three times, you know, during the year, we put it all together at one time. Also, that makes up a good weight of what our request is. We also have some zero client terminals. Those are for our machine tool and some of our advanced manufacturing programs, a little bit more sophisticated workstation there for our students. We're also upgrading a little bit of our, some of our smart classrooms and actually adding some more smart classrooms to the, to the college on the DeHager campus. So we've appropriated some money there. And then finally, you know, we have very good, in fact, probably one of the best, any college I've worked for, surveillance camera network at Calhoun. But this calls for some upgrading and some expansion of that, especially given that the new building is going up in Huntsville. So we're going to be expanding our surveillance a little bit more. So that includes totality of this request.
Will the computers, could the new software, latest software, soon as it will be?
No, sir. We already have, the college already has the licenses for those. And since we're just replacing those out, they will not, just for the, just for the computers themselves.
What is the distribution of the old computers coming out? Where do they go?
Where do they go? I think a lot of times we'll send some out to our prison where we have, where we have college classes out there. And then, you know, I think our IT person just cycles them through whatever the state surplus process goes out the back to. Honestly, I really don't know the answer to that.
There were any cases where you...
We'd be glad to work with them and headline them.
Please do.
Have you ever, have you ever considered computer replacements on a lease agreement as opposed to outright purchase agreement to stay ahead of the curve on new technology?
You know, that's not a bad idea, Mr. McInally. I have, I have not since I've been there, but that is something that I'm, I would be glad to take back to my IT director and we will wise that out for next year. It's going to be a good idea.
Workforce, this is the legislative appropriation for industry certification initiatives. Is this your view?
This is one of the programs to which I referred earlier in the presentation. In the line item for industry certification initiatives that we received from the legislature, there's a set aside of $250,000 for training for existing business and industry. Earlier, I also mentioned that one of the task forces that we stood up was a grants review group that we asked to revisit our processes and see if we could improve or streamline those. Not that there was any awareness of any problems, but that we, it was just time with the changing of the people who administer those programs to do that. Mr. Smith was your representative in that group. And so those grants are for no more than $15,000 for incumbent worker training and they require a dollar-for-dollar match by the industry. And we leverage private investment in the training of our citizens. And it's a business choice as to what agency provides the training, but they often utilize the Alabama Technology Network and, and our community colleges to provide that training. We have quarterly deadlines throughout the year for those grant applications to come to us and be processed. And Mr. Smith suggested, and we concur, if the board is amenable to it, that we could expedite that process and be more responsive and nimble in response, responding. And if we, let me back up one second. We ran that possibility by the legal department and they said that the, there was wording in the legislation that allowed, in essence, you to give prior approval for us to, under the chancellor's approval, to issue those grants to the business subject to all the criteria that they must meet. And, and then just inform the board at that point in time of that action rather than, again, as you were referring about the leaking roofs, essentially waiting two months after those applications are received to respond. Sometimes the businesses are looking to acquire some certification that they need to do contract work for another business and that sort of thing. So time is of the essence in some occasions. So we'd be glad to comply, but whatever your, it's your pleasure in that regard, of course. But we're bringing that before you for your consideration.
Like Tim, that also is magic. Right, some companies are requesting, right?
Right. It requires at least a hundred percent match. So we're leveraging private investment in bringing the skills of our citizens up as well as our investment. And, and they're just small grants, but a lot of times they can have a significant impact, particularly on some of our smaller businesses and industries.
I guess this would complete about fifty percent of the line item budget based on addition.
Well, I should have mentioned that. This amount in your portfolio is the amount that's left this year that you haven't already approved to expend. The remainder of the $250,000 has already been expended under the old process, which you did approve in your month, monthly meetings. This would just be a process to potentially expedite that for the remainder of the year. And if you think well of this possibility, it would be my expectation that next year at the beginning of the allocation process, you would again make that approval for the full $250,000 for the next fiscal year. That's why that's an unusual amount. That's what's remaining for this fiscal year. And on the advice of council, we didn't think we should seek a blanket throughout the future, but it would be for each appropriation in that regard to give the chancellor that authority with notification of the board.
Thank you, Tim. Thank you. I was going to ask David O'Brien to, it's not on this agenda, but David O'Brien to give you an update on a matter that you considered a month or two ago, just so you know where we are and just want to get your, your feedback and thoughts.
In fact, that you all will remember that at the work session we had at Mossland State, two potential leases with the city of Grueton were discussed. And in the course of the discussions, some of the board members raised some questions and actually made some recommendations with respect to the likely to the leases. Recommendations were that the board be included as an identified party in the lease in addition to the college and that the board be included as an additional insured in addition to the college in the terms of the lease. And that there be some express language in the lease dealing with the ADA. We made some revisions to the lease and submitted those to the city and received some feedback from the mayor. In particular, well, there were three things that the mayor raised concern about. One was the specific language with respect to the ADA. I think we could handle that with some alternative language, so I'm not too concerned about that. But he specifically raised concerns with regard to including the board as an identified party in the lease and including the board as an additional insured in the lease. And his reasoning was, with respect to including the board as an identified party, he didn't think that was necessary because the board has no interest in the properties under either of the leases. The property under one lease is solely in the name of the college itself. The property under the other lease is in the name of the state board of education. So the mayor's reasoning was, since the board trustees has no interest in either of those properties, the city shouldn't identify them. There's no need for the city to, to identify them in the lease. With respect to naming the board as additional insurance under the city's insurance policies, it was the mayor's position that even though the board, if, if something happened and the board was sued, and even though the board would likely be dismissed early in, in the lawsuit because of the board's in it in the state court, that still would eat up some defense cost in terms of the attorneys representing the board. And that would eat away at the policy limit on the insurance policy for the city. I understand his arguments. I don't necessarily agree, but that's kind of where we are with, with those leases. And before, going back to the city, if, if the being named as an additional insured and being named as an identified party was a gangbreaker from your perspective, then we're kind of at a dead end. But if it's not, y'all will be happy to make some revisions to the lease and submit it back to the city, but that's the position for the president.
What about doing the identification, the additional insurance of the college?
No, the college, college is what's living.
College is not be covered under the identification and the additional insurance.
Yes.
On the property.
On, on both properties.
Well, the other...
On both leases.
The other policy was for the education.
The other property is owned by the education for the benefit of the college. Now, the only, the only thing I would add is that you remember that we did a lease for the city of Gaston, for the Sartre Fields of Gaston State. City of Gaston agreed to the language that you requested. I just want that.
I guess it's more a pretty good question.
I think it's a matter of whether we're trustees, if we feel like it's a deal breaker or not, of course. If we want to, you know, want to do this badly, and, and it could be one of those things that just relate.
My personal sense is a deal breaker. This is a benefit of the college. And then if the college is covered, and the backside of that, we should recover. I don't, I don't see it as a deal breaker from my perspective. If the school is included in the identification.
The legislation that created this board can transfer a lot of obligations on states that were to work on states. Properties that were owned were not to be transferred again.
That, that is correct, but I think that issue is going to have to be addressed in the very near future.
And if we own, we own properties that are adjacent to colleges, is that what you're going to be right back for?
I, I agree, it's not a deal breaker.
The city is interested. Third-party lawsuits to the state, the flat common. The flat common is very expensive to implement in the policy. And whenever we can be identified, we should use the right of the practice. Not, not every case will we be able to make, and this case will never be. I don't think it's a deal breaker, though we should always attempt to do it at the moment.
You need the paths from the board.
Well, there's boards off the front, and they look at the board, yeah, more than...
And, and we, we may have some discussion between now and the, but, you know, I don't see you make objections again.
Well, would you like for me to redraft the lease in such terms as we believe the city will accept them and then present it to the city before I read it back to you?
Thank you, David. I know Mr. McInally, Mr. Caldwell, and Mr. Davis have been, I mean, they make up the finance audit committee. Mr. McInally is the chair of that committee. And I think that you have a kind of report for us or would like to report out your activity?
I do. If you'll bear with me, I, I prepared some things. I just want to read from it just so that I, I don't misspeak on anything. We did meet by teleconference earlier this week and Mr. Davis, Mr. Caldwell and myself, and we essentially wanted to gather the items that we felt were most important to our committee and prioritize those presented to the board and to the chancellor with respect to things we, we want to see worked on, where we feel we need to be working on. The first one would be accounting reporting software. And all of these, let me just say that all of these are couched in obviously suggestions, thoughts, and ideas that we recognize that, that there's a lot of work to do here. And we also recognize that we're creating some suggestions here that would have some ominous budgets and schedules attached to them, but they're things we need to get tackled. The first one, accounting reporting software. Complete a plan to accomplish standardization of accounting and reporting software for all Alabama Community College assistant institutions. Provide budgets and schedules to effect this change and include training as necessary for each institution. Standardize usage of the chosen software. Define which modules of the chosen software shall be purchased and used by all institutions as well as creating common charting accounts that shall be used by all institutions. Pursue funding as required to move the needle on what is certainly a monumental task. And we suggest that you might even consider radical operational and budget modifications until such time as this can be implemented, because we recognize it's, it has a significant price tag attached to it. The second item is staff a position of internal auditor. And I know this is something that the chancellor was already working on. Our statement there would be to complete the hiring of a professional position within the ACCS central office to perform the function of directing the internal audit department. Committee recommends the position be filled by CPA with substantial experience in governmental accounting and audits. Committee recommends that the mission of this office should be to provide independent examination and analysis of the activities of the colleges and the system office. The objectives of the internal audit department should include assisting the chancellor and board trustees in effective discharge of their responsibilities by furnishing them with analysis, appraisals, recommendations, counsel, and information based on professional judgment, reviews, and audits. Further consideration should be given as to the direct reports of the internal auditor being parallel to the chancellor and to the board trustees through the audit finance committee. Committee also recommends that consideration be given to the staffing of a grants auditor with similar qualification and experience levels, but with substantial experience in grant audits and federal grant audits. And I'll provide you with this, Dr. Heinrich, I should have done that already. The third thing would be financial metrics reporting to the board trustees. The committee requests that a monthly reporting of key indicators of financial status and health of the ACCS system be, financial health be provided to the board in a dashboard format that would give us a 30,000-foot overview of key metrics as determined by the chancellor and the director of audits. Committee recognizes the limited ability to gain system-wide electronic reports by the system office presents a significant challenge and significant potential workload to provide this data in the near term, but we do feel that it's crucial to the board trustees to evaluate matters and execution and discharge of our fiduciary responsibility. And the fourth and last thing would be providing orientation and training, as we have had a lot and we have lots yet to come, with respect to roles and responsibilities of both the college presidents and the central office. A lot of this we're learning along the way, but the committee requests that information be provided to the board, defining and explaining the roles and responsibilities of the presidents along with the system office and the chancellor, and how these roles interact and engage each other to ensure compliance with policies and procedures at system level, at state level, and federal level. And that's, that's really, that's a mouthful, clearly. And, and we, we recognized, our, that there are a lot of things in tradition and that you are pursuing staffing positions. Some of these we're speaking of, you're already pursuing and we recognize and appreciate that very much. And I think this is just an effort for us to, having been here six months, recognizing some things we, we need to do our job. That's all.
Couldn't agree with you more. You're right on target and I'm probably never happy to again, but we have just hired CPA with governmental experience as kind of our lead auditor. That person will start December 4th, so we're excited about that. And although it doesn't target exactly, I think it was your third point, I think this individual comes pretty close. They also have a control specialist who's been with us now for a couple of weeks. And we're, there are so many different directions we can go with this individual. We could use actually several. She appears also to have an expertise in the area you addressed, so we're making progress. But I, I don't disagree with the thing you're saying. You're right on target. Thank you.
I'm going to work for you.
January. Not, not December 4th, I'm sure you started. Now, the, the grants person started two or four weeks ago. The CPA will be January 4th. Yes, thank you. Thank you. Lost a month in there, didn't we, half?
You were really, running the schedule up a little bit. You know, I, I think that all of these things, from the system office, from, from the board to the presidents, I hope that it is all in the couch as continual improvement. We, you know, this is not a, for lack of a better term, it's not a witch hunt operation. It's a, it's an operation to continually improve everybody at every level, every college, and, you know, just to make us better and to share what we learn across the board. And someone who is visiting all places is going to have a better opportunity to share, learn, learn practices.
Well, and let me just say, I think two-way precedent is exactly the kind of relationship that we were hoping for from our board trustees. So you're right on target. You're right on target. So thank you for that. Anything else, Ray?
Excellent, excellent report. Very, uh, thank you for your leadership and work, Milton. Frank, thank you for, for your input and all of that, just really appreciate it. I, uh, I guess with the chancellor, yes, yes, at the board he can share with, uh, with the key people, and so, and he's staffing here.
I'd like to ask Judy Baker, if, uh, he, he touched, just recently during the, uh, the board meeting, a possible legislative item, of course, you approved the, the agenda. But as is always the case, there are things out there swirling, and there are things that we anticipate they swirl, so I'd just ask him to give you a, an update about, uh, what his crystal ball says at this point.
I, I was looking to see if I could see Tim. See him? Tim O'Bea. You know, Tim, I've been there fifty-one years, and I might could hit you on that infrastructure. Uh, let me kind of begin, and, and this is kind of, you know the legislative process, so what I say now may be old this afternoon. But in talking with a variety of people, decision makers in the process, the chairman of the budget committee in the House for Education, and that's where the budget for education will originate this year, you know, they rotate which senator of the House. His top priority, and he gave me permission to say this, is a pay increase for the employees. And I think that is much needed, uh, we've been, what is it, eight plus years since we've had a pay increase for our employees. So, I'm proud to hear that, and he has some thoughts about the amount, and I can, I'm not privileged to, to tell you that. I don't know the amounts, but he has some general ideas, and I like his ideas about it. Uh, so that's a, that's a key item in the whole legislative process. But there's some other issues that we are interested in, and you've already seen what we have provided. But as we go through the process of consolidation, there're gonna be some expenses that must be met if we're gonna be successful. You know, it's easy to say let's consolidate, well, not for us to say that, but it's easy for some other office holders to say that. But then they don't recognize the difficulty, I'm thinking of Central's, uh, you've got three schools. Uh, two of them have one platform for financial management, and the other has another platform. Well, that has to be dealt with in the process. I just use that as one example, but there are a lot of other examples. So, we're making a plea for some additional funding for the chancellor's office to be used in that process. Because we're gonna have to hip some of these schools out. Uh, the other situation particularly Reed, uh, they don't have the money to do anything, uh, in terms of making the program what we want it to be. See, we don't want to consolidate our regional side, regionalized, or whatever they call it, or, or join schools together and end up with a lesser program. We want to have expanded, better programs, and if we're to do that, we're gonna have to have some funds. We've been having conversations, and in the budget that you have seen, we've put fifty million dollars in there. But, uh, we're re-looking at all of that, I've had some receptive ears in the budget process, and we've been talking with them. And we're gonna go for a major infusion of capital funds. You can't do the kinds of things that we had people talking about today, and in the skills programs and the shops and the labs, unless they're updated, current equipment and current methods that we're teaching, and it costs money to do that. I'll, as we get something together, I'll, you'll know about it. But, uh, I've kind of led some other folks in the, that vote on those kinds of things, take some lead in that. Chancellor and I had a meeting yesterday with one of the legislators that's really interested in that being. So, as that comes together, but we are going to pursue a major capital infusion for the community college system. And we'll let you know how, how that shapes up as we go along. Now, on the issue of the property, we are drafting legislation, I have a meeting scheduled for Thursday. I expect that we will see a piece of legislation by that time or close to that about the transfer of property that should be trans- should have been transferred, and we just didn't take care of that, but it should have been transferred with the original legislation. But the transfer of the property to the community college system, that, uh, that should be transferred along with the schools. So, we'll have that piece of legislation. I mentioned earlier in the regular board meeting, uh, there will be an issue for the legislature this time, dealing with some form of change in tenure. Uh, and I say that because it's all over the map at this point. The chancellor and I have been talking for some time, and I've had folks looking at this. And I kind of feel like the community college with a board of trustees of its own needs to be in a strong governing position as it relates to employment, and employment matters. And as we work toward that, I want you to think about it, because I'll be talking with you, but, uh, we currently are under students first. In that instance, that was drafted basically dealing with K through twelve. We were incidental in that process, and we encounter problems on a regular basis because of that. As we move through this session and we see tenure issues coming up, I, I, I don't know that we're hit there yet, but I think we need to look at how we become an entity ourselves, and we control to the extent that we need to, the process of whether, of the employment process. Now, we're gonna have some rules to go by, but I think we need hours, we don't need to have to follow K through twelve, because there's a lot of things that they have to deal with that do not apply here. So, I'm not talking about removing job protection, that's not what the issue is. But I want to see the board of trustees of the community college system and our presidents treated as if we are that important. And we're important enough and we are good enough to manage our business as best we can. And we don't need to be mixing and mingling as much in terms of those issues. Uh, and that's just kind of my feeling at this point, I, I'm, I'm wide open, y'all make the policy positions and decisions, but I just think you need to think about that process. And as soon as we get something that we can release to you, I'd be more than happy to do that. Sometimes chancellor and I give an information, saying, now, you hang on to this until we give you permission, but, uh, I, I'm talking probably out of school a little bit, chancellor, but I do think, I want the board to be thinking about that process. So, those are kind of what I see the major issues that we're gonna be digging for. Uh, I, I, I feel better than I have felt in the last couple of years. Uh, I've, I've literally had, uh, meetings with the budget chair in the House. Uh, his position is this should be the year for the community colleges. And so, as we work through that, I think we've gotta act responsibly and provide good opportunities, good legislation for them. And, uh, as we go through that process, I'll keep, make sure that you know what's going on, and I'm wide open for your discussion. And chancellor, that's pretty much, uh, any change, unless there's some question.
You obviously are aware now of, of, of the importance of, of SACS, and our predator, Willan, of course, was here last month. And, uh, there, through these mergers and through the change in governance, in, in each one of those events, there are, uh, a series of steps we must take to remain, uh, in good stead with our, with our predator, with SACS. And, uh, of course, we've been working on the governance piece, I say we, it's easy for me to say we, there's some really, really good people out there that have been working on the governance piece that applies to SACS literally since May, when, uh, when you were, when you were sworn in. And, uh, we just had a SACS meeting, we were just, many of us were in Houston, and, uh, and we got some good news, uh, during that, during that meeting. And I've asked, uh, Dr. Colen Ross, she's the, the interim at Southern Union, uh, and she is gonna have the key player in, in, and has put in untold hours on this governance piece that applies to SACS. So, I, again, wanna publicly thank her for that, but she's gonna to give you an update in terms of where we are now.
Okay, as the chancellor said, the good news that we received is the substantive change in, for the change in governance for the colleges and Alabama Community College system was approved by the SACS CLC board of trustees on our meeting as Sunday, December the sixth. So, so the substantive change is approved, that's the good news. And I think Dr. Willan covered this last month when she was here, but SACS looks at a substantive change as any kind of modification or expansion in nature that affects accredited institutions. So, that change in nature, um, that deals with the appointment of this board is that any change in the legal status, form of control, or ownership of the institution, that's the one that this falls under. But, uh, Dr. Heinrich and I met with the chief of staff, Dr. Mike Johnson of SACS, and the bad news is, we thought we were finished. Because SACS, as you can imagine, um, deals with a lot of substantive changes, but most of them are like new programs in our schools, and even these mergers are not as uncommon as a change in governance for a whole system of colleges like this one is. So, we thought, you know, they don't know exactly, we were making remarks to each other when we came out of the room, so, you know, it's sort of trading new ground for SACS to, to, to do one of this magnitude with this many colleges involved. So, in June, when I met with them after our board meeting, they said they didn't think we'd require a visit, but we received news the other day that it is approved, but now we will have to write a report and have a visiting team to visit the state, what is a standard change. So, what that means is, uh, he gave us sort of a timeline, if we can, uh, it's an ambitious timeline, like our other timelines that we're dealing with with SACS CLC. But if we can get the report finished by February, the end of February, first of March, and he can get a committee appointed to come visit us before April, then, um, that can be turned, the report can be turned in, and the committee's report can be turned in, and the June meeting of the board of trustees, it can be, um, approved at that meeting. And what this means, if a committee, when a committee comes to visit us, he said there'll possibly be maybe five people on the team. Those of you that have helped us, I know Mr. Floyd came and helped us at Southern Union with ours, and, and they were very complimentary of their interviews with us. So, I know others of you have probably been on with the onsite teams of our colleges, so you know what this means. And they're gonna, they'll come, and he said they'll spend some time at the system office, because they are looking at all the colleges. And they will not see, come and visit all the colleges, that's the good news for you presidents, yes, presidents. They won't visit all, but he said they would probably visit two. And the kind of questions, and that he said that they would also talk with some of you, uh, especially you, Mr. Thompson. So, um, you can expect that, or either the governor, if the governor wishes to speak to them, he said they would probably be impressed, that the governor talked with them about your appointments. But, um, the kind of questions they'll be asking you will be things that you'll be familiar with, it'll be some of the same information that we gathered for the first report. And that will be things like, uh, conflict of interest, undue influence, um, your relationship to the colleges, and, uh, the reasoning behind the legislation and that sort of thing. And, uh, as far as the report, he told me the template was being updated as we speak, so if I will contact him next week, he will let me know for sure which standards apply to this situation. But I looked last night, and I think I know pretty much the standards on that template that's gonna apply. Now, there may be additional standards that he points out we have to address, but the first one is a core requirement. If you remember Dr. Willan talking last month, she talked about the core requirements, uh, as part of the SACS process being the B in the GIs. And that core requirement, you, we meet this, and so there shouldn't be any problem, but I'm just gonna read it to you as it's stated. The institution has a governing board of at least five members that is the legal body with specific authority over the institution. The board is an active policymaking body for the institution and is ultimately responsible for ensuring that the financial resources of the institution are adequate to provide a sound educational program. The board is not controlled by a minority of board members or by organizations or interests separate from it. Both the presiding officer of the board and the maj- and a majority of other voting members of the board are free from any contractual employment or personal or familiar financial interest in the institution. And then there's, um, seven comprehensive standards, I'm not gonna read each of those, but they deal with things like undue influence and conflict of interest and, and, and things like that. So, we know we'll have to address those, there may be some others that we have to address, but if we can get that done, and it can get approved by June, then we're done, if it has no recommendations. If the committee's report has some recommendations, then we'll have to answer that in a referral report, and that will have to be finished by September, and that would go on the December meeting of the SACS CLC board of trustees. But that's worst-case scenario. So, uh, we just wanted to update you, and do you have any questions about what, about the process or where we are now? Okay?
One, one thing I would say, when, uh, it was interesting talking with Dr. Johnson, uh, earlier this week, I don't know when, it seems like it's been longer ago than that, just a few days ago. He all but admitted that this just is something they rarely do, and many of the folks at SACS have never been through on things, and the type of governance change. So, in a way, I feel a little bit like we're getting big of sorts with this new template. That's not all that, I, I think that's, I think that's positive. But I think overwhelmingly, he made it clear that they will work with us, uh, and, and help mentor us through this process if we need that support. So, there was nothing, was nothing negative at all, everything was very positive in our conversation. Thank you, Willan.
Before your line key, uh, first. I just have, we have a little quick items, unless, maybe my staff out there, did I miss anything? Checklist, you can, uh, you know, just, just, uh, encourage you, I think that, yes, the quicks are still, please, thank you. Before you, uh, before you leave, and, uh, and certainly from all of us at all the colleges and system office, we all started to wish you a very happy holiday. So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Yes, sir.
Well, a couple, couple questions for the chancellor, uh, is our lunch, and he talks about Europe.
Yes.
Uh, what kind of dollars, I don't know, maybe in January before you get, get some inflation? But I see that dollars coming out of the system, dollars we have to invest, and where do we get this, these funds and, and, or to support this?
There, there's going to be a variety of sources, um, and one, as you might expect, I've, I've spoken to the governor about this, and he's very, very supportive of this, and wants to do all he can to support it. I think we'll get some help there, I'm sure. But the colleges, although we would probably have to tweak some things, uh, have a certain number of tuition waivers that are available that, uh, certainly would impact, and to a certain extent, that, as well. And there are several private organizations out there that are very interested in supporting this effort, because they see it as a, uh, and, and is a potential economic boon for the, uh, for the, the state long-term, that we get this population involved in education. So, we still are working on some of those details, but we're already identifying some very optimistic resources and interests, so it's a great question.
The, the last, I mean, is, I would like to, myself and this board, to also understand, uh, the role now going forward and ATN role, exploring both the board and the college systems and the whole study.
I'm glad you said that, because actually ATN, uh, is, uh, you'll, are you presenting in January?
I guess so.
Yes, yeah, so you will hear, we're gonna dedicate that orientation time to ATN, so you'll, you're very good at it.
Any other comments?
At support station, find your chancellor, find your staff, everything.
That's the board session, thank you chancellor, thank you staff, and everything. I thought would be really attractive, what's that is in front here, I'm going to ask David Walters, our resident photographer, to take a picture of this, so y'all stay seated and, uh, go ahead and take a few shots, and everybody go ahead and, and, we're dismissed, and I've asked the board to stay seated. You will, absolutely, I, you can gamble.